Well, this is May 12th, 2025, we have a public school report session meeting at the border. Madam first, we call the roll.
Mr. Richardson.
Here.
Ms. Ireland.
Here.
Ms. Harris.
Here.
Dr. Chris Gonzalez. Mr. Rockman.
Here.
Ms. Burdo.
Here.
Dr. Teller.
All right, this is the comment portion. I didn't see anyone sign up over there, if anyone here has a question. All right, we'll move to the consent agenda, which includes approval of consent data items, the agenda of minutes and bills. Any special ones in that?
No, we're trying to approve consent agenda items as presented.
So.
Motion by Mr. Ireland, second from Melissa.
All in favor?
All in favor? All right, here's us to report the presentations by staff. We'll start with, uh, Dr. Restivo on the ASCA. Well, thank you.
Yes, all right. It's a dynamic duo right here. Look at them.
All right. Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for giving me a few minutes to just share with you about ASCA. And I recognize some faces from doing the ASCA presentation last year, but some of you are new, so not go too fast, not too slow, somewhere in between. Thank you.
Do you want to do it? You have D R A, so.
I actually wanted to make it.
So, hit the screen?
Yeah. Okay, I guess it doesn't matter. So ASCA is the American School Counseling Association. It's a model that's been vetted and it's recognized across the country as one of the, obviously, the best school counseling programs. And we want all our schools to be recognized. And as a matter of fact, it was also in our strategic plan, and I wanted to put that here, it was L E three point two. The goal was that all of our schools would RAM. RAM means Recognize ASCA Model Program. So we didn't quite have all of our schools RAM, but we do have two schools that RAM. The ASCA model is based on four pillars: Assess, Manage, Define, and Deliver. And then if counselors are able to follow through and deliver all of the mindset and behaviors that are prescribed by ASCA, you get RAM. And RAM means Recognize ASCA Model Program, which is, like I put in the slide, a gold star, that's what we want. We have two schools that are at it. I found a little video, and I'm only going to do two minutes, but that gives you, you get to hear from people, some counselors that have gone through the process and what RAM is.
Before doing RAM, I felt like, I feel like I'm going to be harmed. I didn't know what curve do I have. And so I kind of needed something that showed me what it should look like. RAM is a snapshot of your comprehensive school counseling program. I could do RAM every year now. Once you get into that mode of doing it, it's just the snapshot. So we're good, like, we're in the process now. I was creating my data, I was collecting my data this summer. Everything is so different now that I'm in that mindset. So it's just, it's more fun.
It helps us to make sure we're aligned with our school improvement plan, and which really helps to make administration and the school understand how the Student Services Department is supporting our school improvement goals and contributing to them.
It sets it up so that in the future, they just trust us, right? And they give us free rein to kind of do our thing. They don't really question us. They know if we're doing something, we're doing it with more than just intentions, but we actually have a rationale behind it. And so having that freedom, that trust, they involve us in their leadership activities and things like that, that's really where I see it coming through the most.
When you have a model to show them, this is where we want to go, this is what we want it to look like, how can we mind it to help us out? Then people will volunteer, they will come in, do the beginning of it, create a kind of a team rather than just being a house of nine, try to, you know, meet all the needs that are needed to be there, something just like.
So I just wanted to show you a few minutes so you could hear from other schools on how ASCA actually supports the school improvement plan. And it also enables counselors to be not only supporting students, but also be leaders within their schools. So right now, we have two schools that have received the RAM recognition, and that's Quarles Elementary School and John Hanley High School. All of our other schools are in the process of getting towards RAM certification. We have three schools that are, that have an ASCA coach and two more that have a RAM coach. So what that means is the first level, the ASCA coach is the very beginning, where the coach is really assisting our school counselors on how to begin implementing the ASCA model, understanding the model, how to collect data, how to write a vision and mission statement that it's aligned, not only with ASCA, but also with their school mission and vision statement. And then doing the lesson plans and collecting data, and then obviously seeing the outcome data, if it matches what the goal was or not, or realigning. So once they've done that, then they're ready for a RAM coach, which is a more intense process for collecting data and submitting it to ASCA. After you submit it, you wait and then you see if it's accepted and if you get the gold star, what we call. So all of our schools are in that process in some way, shape, or form. What we do know from research is that schools that are implementing ASCA with fidelity see suspension rates, discipline referrals, and things like bullying going down, decreasing. They see an increase in graduation rates, math and reading scores, SAT scores, kids taking rigorous courses, and improved attendance. I always say, this is my favorite slide, so I'm going to say it again tonight, all of our counselors do great things. They do parent meetings, are involved in attendance, they help kids choose courses and have great schedules that enhance their possibility of going to colleges and so on. However, we're all busy, right? Schools are busy, teachers are busy, counselors are busy, and we're just going all over the place like those arrows. If you really abide by the ASCA model, then those arrows become linear and structured. So it's not magic, it's not actions that our counselors perhaps don't already do for the most part, but it's providing structure and doing it with intentionality and doing it based on data. Another part of ASCA is having the Advisory Council, which is engaging community and parents and staff, and these are meetings that are run by our school counselor. There was Sarah at Quarles last year, and she shares data with the people in the Advisory Committee, and then they decide whether to do more of it, less of it, or come up with different ideas. But they review program results, and everybody is at the table can advise on program goals. So it's a true partnership between schools, staff, and community. The next two slides, I had actually our two school counselors who did RAM describe what it looked like. Obviously, it's hard to describe that in two slides, but it was very rigorous. They put down the ten required sections, which took two years, by the way, and I'm not going to read it to you, you can read for yourself, but obviously, the first bullet is designing and writing a vision and mission statement, which again, not only aligns with ASCA, but that it aligns with their school vision and mission. Outcomes, student goals, classroom groups, and mindsets and behaviors. The mindsets in ASCA refer to attitudes and behaviors which influence and support the learning, and the behaviors are actual skills the students demonstrate. And the Advisory Counselor, doing large groups, small groups, and then doing the reports, seeing where the gaps are, so that then you can go back and align. It's all data-driven, and it's aligned with W P S five-year strategic plan. So there's a national conference once a year. This year, ASCA Conference is in California, Long Beach, and we have two principals going, seven counselors and two interns. And at that conference, there will be a RAM award dinner. It's a really big deal, it's national, not many students and not many counselors get to this level, and we are very, very proud. It's July 14th. Do you have any questions for me?
Sure. How, did it come about that it was Hanley and Quarles? Was there sort of a selection process, or did they sort of take the initiative? I was wondering, you know, why is there, I guess, which slide is that? Slide five? Why there's, you know, a difference in the level of achievement between the different schools?
Yeah, so that's a very good question. I think it's a little bit of everything you just said. Some of our counselors have more experience than others, right? So because it does take a level of experience to jump through these hoops. And I always say, there's a lot of hoops and some are on fire, right? So some of our counselors have more experience and were more willing and more comfortable with it. And when we presented it to them, they're like, I'm in, I love ASCA, I want to do it. Some of our counselors were less experienced and perhaps newer to our school division and wanted a little bit more time. And I think the two schools that are taking the lead, we're learning from them, right? When we meet, you kind of like bring your documents so we can share. And so the other two schools that are right behind Frederick Douglass and Daniel Morgan, I think got a little bit more confidence by seeing the products from the other two schools there. So it was a little bit of that. It was a little bit of what they've done before, what they already had ready, because out of those ten items, you saw some schools were, oh, I already have some of this, I can do it. And it was meeting with the ASCA folks and listening to what the requirements were. Some of the, two of the schools said, we just want an ASCA coach so that we can kind of really understand that better, and then the following year, we can maybe get a RAM coach and feel more ready. I think, yeah.
Great, no, that's a, that's a great answer.
We have some newbies there. It's scary to take this on.
Oh, yeah, for sure.
What a commitment, two years.
It's a commitment. It's a commitment.
And so the coaches, the RAM coaches and the ASCA coaches, are they on staff already at the schools, or are they, where?
So they are all over the United States. We meet with them virtually.
Okay.
So once you get the coach assigned to you, you meet with them once a month, you meaning our school counselors. And as they get closer with, to the process, then they're meeting twice a month.
What else?
I just was wondering, what was the selection process for who goes to the conference?
The, the schools that, they were given priority, the schools that did the RAM certification. And, and I think Lisa's going to talk more on that.
Yeah, the, the Wish Grant is funding all of the expenses for that at the conference, as well as actually the RAM coaches, and really just about everything that you just heard about. We are lucky to have the grant as a resource to fund all of that.
We'll leave it to you, I guess.
I think that was a segue.
Good segue.
Thank you for saying that. So I'm Lisa Cobb, and about six months ago, I took on this position of being the project specialist for the Wish Grant. And thankfully, I was following in the footsteps of Rachel Levi, which is intimidating, but she has been a great resource as well, and would help me get used to everything and figure it all out. Plus, she made a great start, you'll see as we go through some of this one. So I, I think some of you are very familiar with the Wish Grant, a federal grant, and the mission is to increase that high-quality mental health services and also with the community agencies. It's kind of a three-step process in that the first step is to make sure you've got partnerships with institutes of higher education, so colleges and universities, because they are the source for the interns, the graduate students, who are ready to do an internship. And the Wish Grant funds that internship so that the graduate student is actually being paid, so they have the experience of being an employee with a really authentic work experience, as well as being guided by a supervisor. The supervisors are always full-time, qualified, mental health providers themselves. So there's school psychology, there are school counselors, and there's school social workers. And so they're, they would be assigned to the appropriate supervisor who's willing to take them on. And the grad goes also providing stipend for the supervisors. So it makes it really attractive to everyone who's involved. But I would have to say, as I've gotten more into the process of talking with the people who are going through this, those supervisors, principals, and the interns, it's not really about the money. The reputation that Winchester Public Schools now has for providing a really outstanding experience is what's carrying the school, and there has been a lot of growth. The outcomes are certainly beneficial to the students, the attendance and academics and decreasing the suicide and suicide ideation, but there's also the advantage to the school system because those interns become part of our recruiting pipeline to fill vacancies that we have. So to show you some of the growth that we've experienced, in the first year, we had the four universities from which we could draw qualified graduate students. We would always work closely with the universities to introduce ourselves and talk about what the experience would be like, and then, of course, they provide references to make sure that the interns we take on are truly ready for this experience. In year two, Rachel added William Mary and Shippensburg, and then in this past year, we're now in year three, I was able to add West Virginia and Regent University, which is online. In this chart, what you're seeing is the increase in the number of interns that we were able to put into the program. So the blue is the school counseling interns, and the orange is the school social work intern. We have, as of yet, not had a intern in school psychology. And the grant's a little funky in that it works by the calendar year. So in their world, we start in January and we end in December. So we're ending our third year here in December of 2025, this coming fall. So we will have interns with us this fall, and I've already got thirteen on board. We have nine that would come in in the fall as school counseling interns and four as social working interns. And that's really, that maxes out our capacity, because you have to have a qualified supervisor to work with each intern. So we're kind of full, we are full. And then here's where the, the kind of step three is, once you've had these interns working with you, they know our school, they know our system, they know our students, and we know them. So it's really nice when they are interested in coming on board and applying for a position that we have open. We're excited to interview, and in this case, we've had a total of three hires already, one intern back in the very beginning of the program that Rachel started, filled a vacancy in this current year, 2425. And now two interns who are just finishing up their internship were great applicants for the two positions we had open. One was the counselor leaving Daniel Morgan Intermediate School, and the other position was one that had been vacant a whole year, is we didn't have qualified applicants for it. So that just shows you how the interns really help us in the hiring pipeline. There's a lot of things that Wish funds, like I said, about, just about everything that has to do with ASCA is funded by them. This is kind of a big picture look, all of the things that the interns receive, a salary, housing and tuition, a laptop, a cell phone, the stipends for the supervisors, and professional development, which goes beyond just the ASCA conference, I'll talk about that in a few, few minutes. Also, one of our full-time employees has already taken advantage of the tuition assistance. The Wish Grant offers up to $10,000 per year. That person didn't need $10,000, but they certainly had some bills from tuition as they began working towards their degree in school counseling. So it was nice that Wish Grant helped them out with that. Craig Leen is teaching CTE education over at Hanley, letting the kids have that experience of exploring possible mental health careers for themselves. We also give memberships and SCUDA, which is a basically a student collection platform. Looking at professional development a little bit closer, in addition to ASCA, there's been all kinds of training in restorative justice and school climate and substance abuse by a number of different agencies and groups. We also fund the tools that teachers and counselors use in teaching social emotional learning. That's what the move this role is for at the elementary level, and Huzella has a component that teaches the cell that we use in the middle of high school. I talked about the staff tuition reimbursement. And Craig Leen's class has done a number of things as they explore the careers, they've had good guest speakers, they had a special project where they were collaborating with an English class reading The Crucible. I'm sorry, Mary Tedrow is not here, she would like to have heard, that they were exploring the possible mental health issues that might have been involved in the Salem witch trials. That was pretty creative. And then this book, this is from the Wish Grant, a gift for all of you, and I hope you will take a look at it. It's written by Jonathan Hain, who's a social psychologist, he's written a number of books, The Coddling of the American Mind, and a couple of other things. And Rachel got us started with a fireside chat with the First Lady of Virginia, and then when I came on board, we ordered the copies of the book. Well, first, we asked families and staff, would they like the copy of the book? And I was amazed that there were so many people who responded and wanted one, and that's all been distributed to them. And whenever I show up at an evening event like the International Fair over at John Kirk, I'm trying to give away more books, and I've been able to do that. We do Spanish version and English version. But Jonathan Hain has written a wonderful book based on a lot of great research about childhood and how childhood has been changed, and it has obviously some pretty negative results. The great thing about it though, too, is it's written for people just like me and I, teachers, students, families, government, school board, with some ideas of how we can, using some collective action, make things better. So I think if more of us read the book and took action, we would all be better off. Our students would certainly be better off. My grandchildren would be better off. I just wanted to end with just showing a few folks who have been involved in this. Beth O'Donnell talked about what a great asset it's been because it's just given more resources and trying to meet the needs of the students academically, emotionally. Jafar in the right-hand corner there is an intern at Daniel Morgan with Beth O'Donnell. He actually worked with Paul Cody as a supervisor, and he really appreciated the fact that he was getting really good feedback and that authentic work experience. This is a school social worker, Angela Wright, as an intern with her mentor, Kristin Snyder. They worked well together, and now Angela is one of our hires for the coming year. That's done great job. And I wanted to also share, this is Dr. Keelty, who's with James Madison, and JMU has provided us with probably with the most number of interns overall, three last year, four in the coming year, and she just really has appreciated what W P S has done. She feels like we've provided a great program, a great experience for their interns. Robin is also coming on board next year. She's over at Hanley right now, but she'll be taking that split position that we had vacant for a year. So that's where I was going to end it. Does anyone have any questions?
I did attend that fireside.
Did you?
It was great, and that actually is what made me let my kids walk to school alone because of the, they talk about free-range kids.
Yes.
And I will say, there was no yelling or crying, they get themselves up, they get themselves to school. So that was a really great event. So thank you for putting that on, but I'm really excited about this one.
Good.
I'll just say, this has been a, I mean, it's, it's achieving all the outcomes we had before, right? And this is not nothing, this was a five-million-dollar federal grant, over five years, that we did get notice, when was it, a month ago or?
It's kind of like April 1st.
April 4th.
The bad April 4th.
Yeah, that this grant will be ending at the end of this calendar year, as Lisa mentioned. So it is part of the federal cuts. You know, and not to be political, but it, this was making a difference here, and it's not something we would be able to do on our own. And so we saw good outcomes from that, and I'm very glad that we received it for the time we did, because we're in year three or two.
Yes, we're in year three. So we'll be able to complete year three.
Yeah, we'll be able to complete year three, but it is a casualty of, of the cuts of the federal.
Yes, unfortunate.
Will we be able to take less of the burden?
Absolutely.
We can't use the money to hire people, but.
Yeah, I think the biggest, I don't know what Lisa might say, but when she mentioned our reputation, I mean, that's something money can't buy. I mean, that's just great to have a reputation solidified in this region and those particular areas, and the partnerships with the universities. When professors and program directors know us at the top of their tongue, like, the first recommendation is go to Winchester. That, that's going to pay dividends many years to come, and that's due to a great experience that we've walked with these folks. And, yeah, we did, the grant paid them a full salary, that was the big difference maker was, you go into council, you have to do an ungodly number of hours just to become a counselor, but you don't get paid for that. You essentially have to quit any full-time job you have to work for free to get transferred to social work, search school sites, counselors, et cetera. So we were able to pay them a first-year teacher's salary, it was something to offset that sacrifice, but even despite that, I think our reputation has been magnified in a really positive way.
And finally, and I completely agree with that, Jason, and some of those professors have come to Winchester to do training for school counselors. So having that face to a name at a university with the director of school counseling programs makes a huge difference, not only for our interns and getting staff, but also when we send our students who apply in those programs, now they're like, oh, this is a Winchester kid.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you.
Up next, the technology update with Mr. Gray.
Good evening, folks. So we're a project-heavy team, so this is a good time of the year as we're wrapping up the school year, taking opportunity to share some of the projects we've worked on this year and give you a little glimpse of some of the things that we have on board right now that we're going to be starting or have started recently, we'll try to wrap up the summer leading into the next school year. The majority of what I'm going to share tonight, I'm really going to package it in a way as the group of the department that's waiting in or doing the bulk of the work, so just for your reference, a little snapshot of the org chart, you'll see that as we get through the slide deck. Then before we jump in, a couple of things I'll mention real quick that's not on there. In addition to those roles, we've had a good relationship with the CTE department. We've now had two student interns, we've had student interns for years, we just finished up interview process, we're going to have three next year, so while they're not really highlighted in any of these docs, I'll just, there are these slides that I do want to give a shout out to them, they're a great asset to our team, we're thankful for that relationship that we have. And then I'll also mention in here, a little out of the ordinary for this, for our department, we did have a lot of turnover this year, so we're a department of sixteen, so we had twenty-five percent turnover this year, so a decent amount of extra work in onboarding and cross-training that we spent, but we're solid now, we've got folks, we've got folks on board. Just, just a few other things worth mentioning before we jump in. So these first two slides I'll share with you here are specific to work that we're doing that's tied to the strategic plan. The majority of our objects are in goal number four, organizational environment, so this slide and the next slide, this slide here focuses on tech recorder performance, and the next slide is really more on like asset management and inventory management, so a couple screenshots I snagged out of the software that we're using that we've been implementing over the last couple of years, and really just to highlight, to show you that there is work going on behind the scenes tied specifically to these. tied specifically to these goals and strategies in the strategic plan. We've been implementing a, some new software that's tightly integrated into a lot of our systems. So there's tight integrations into Google, the directory, and our Power School student information system. So we're pulling over student data, we're pulling over staff, we're importing in all of our assets. And it's, it's really giving us a lot more consolidated data than we've ever had before. And for example, like when a device is checked out to a student, and then now they can log in through this system or by shooting an email to create a ticket. Now there are layers tied to that account. We have the history of all those folks and carries over with them. We can do a lot of reporting and a lot of, gives us a good talking point as we meet weekly with our teams or we have our monthly department meetings. So just to share with you a quick glimpse on how this work is going on. Both of these goals or both of these strategies under goal number four, it's my invention that we'll carry these on into the next strategic plan. We're making really good progress here, but it's not finished. We haven't reached a sustaining point, so it'll be our, be our goal to carry those on. So just a snapshot there, you're seeing a lot of work order-related data. And like I mentioned, this year is really more specific to our asset lifecycle management. So we've got thousands and thousands of our assets in here now. And it's helping us be able to track better things like purchase dates and estimated useful life. And our ultimate goal here is to have all of our stuff in here. And then every year in the fall, be able to generate some reports of everything that has an expected useful life that's going to expire in the next budget year with dollars associated to it. So they would print out pretty accurate reports from a budget perspective. That's, that's the big goal, and we are getting really close there. We're much closer than we were several years ago. So now I'm moving more towards the project-related work, and we'll focus specifically on the different chunks of the department that's going to work. So in this customer service bucket, specifically the computer techs for these folks, there are front ends of our break decks and our work order type workload of our work order work that's happening in the school. So you can see there, this folks closed out year-to-date in this school year, just under 4,000 tickets. They did a staff and faculty Chromebook refresh at the beginning of the school year of 500 devices. In the fall, they did a seventh grade refresh of 350 devices. That same team just finished up a few weeks ago. We're in collaboration with the operations department, new audio system in the 7, 8 jam, which was kind of a tasklist that we were there for a while. And really, the bulk of their work has been focusing on these projects that are going to be happening in the summer. They spent the last several months on a lot of planning and prep for our Windows 11 migration and our Office 2024 migration. So behind the scenes, just some work, making sure things are going to be compatible when I might have like these software interoperability issues or in hardware issues. Small pockets of those updates have been happening in the last couple of months, but the goal of that being all completed, a little over, a little under 1,600 of those devices will be finished by the start of the school year ago. And then they'll also be working on, they'll be taking the lead on rolling out ninth grade and fifth grade refresh of Chromebooks this summer. That'll be ready before the school starts handling. So also, what I consider our, another customer service bucket, we have our technology support specialist and student information assistance coordinator. So I handle projects here just to highlight from their world. First, this is our, wrapping up our first year of online registration and online annual verification. So it's something that has, it's been in the works here for a while. It's a place we wanted to get to, so we, we made that jump about this time last year. Just some notes there, you know, this was really tightly integrated with some student services departments. So we worked a lot with like the social workers, the nurses, the registrars, the ESO department. A lot of different pockets of things that we brought out workflows in those online forms and those annual verification processes. We spent a decent amount of time tweaking those forms and some processes, but I think we're in a really good spot now. So just started with kindergarten registration, as you know, back in like March. So using this for the second time this year, implementing the changes that we've made. I think we're in a good spot with how that's working. They also did a Bright Arrow notification system this year. That's our, our core notification system that can just replace another product that we had. It's much more tightly integrated with Power Schools. Over the last few weeks, we're, we're starting to take our next step deeper into this program. It's going to give us the ability to do some things like build these custom templates that we can send out some very student-specific information automated through the system. For example, our goal is to be able to deliver report cards through Bright Arrow, which will show up in the Power School parent portal. And we were, had some automated attendance reports that go out. When you say you reach maybe like the five absence threshold or ten absence thresholds and something like that. And we just recently, we're working with the transportation department to build out some transportation info-related stuff that we'll be able to publish into the portal through there. So good use happening there. Another project that's tightly integrated in with registration and transportation. Over the last several months, we've really spent a lot of time. This is another project that we were collaboration with operations. Really listening to the registration process and listening to the transportation perspective process. There's a lot of process improvement and standardizing on processes and procedures and how the online registration happens, ultimately how the registration or the transportation information was implemented. And then just a lot of the crosswalk and cross-talk between those two departments and how the different applications work. So that's something that we just wrapped up about a month ago, and we've implemented multiple changes in those software programs. We've standardized on some processes and procedures, and I think we landed in a really good place there. Good feedback from both of those departments. Again, with student services, we facilitated some Power School training this year. It's been very well received. I think we're going to have a strong season in scheduling. So this Power School training, we brought, we brought a vendor in, spent several days here. And then we brought school leadership in and registrar, registrar staff in and the dedicated school scheduling training. And again, really the goal there is to build capacity in schools and build capacity on our teams for this. So I think again, that's another, another project that we'll receive. Moving along to the instructional technology side of the house. These are our ITCs that are focused in our schools. So they really have like three buckets of their main focus. This year is really staff training and onboarding and student digital citizenship training. And a big bucket for them this year has been AI later. So this year at the beginning of the year, or last year at the beginning of the school year, they implemented a new onboarding and orientation process where we partnered with HR and finance, and we brought folks in here and we offered A and PM sessions as mandatory training. That was new, something we haven't done before, but very well received. We've already planned it and expanded on it for this coming year. We're going to do those sessions in July. Good feedback there. We just recently completed our fifth year of common sense education certification for the districts and all the schools. So kudos to those folks. There's a lot of work that happens behind the scenes throughout the year to get those lessons planned and trained and meet the requirements for common sense to get that certification. So proud of them for continuing that. And from an AI perspective, you know, that's, that's been heavy for that group this year. So as we've talked, there's been some mentions from here from Jake and some of his updates, but we were part of a BASS cohort that worked with Henrico and with Rob County this year. So they played a role in that. They played a role in our task force here internally. And then a lot of work working with the curriculum instruction team, helping to build out lesson plans and looking what the lessons would look like from a student perspective and what some of the stuff that staff would do through what they were prepping before we did our Gemini rollout. So we were active in a lot of that work as well. And last thing from our network, the infrastructure team. These are the folks that are doing a lot of the more technical work. They tend to be more project-heavy. So a little over 1,200 tickets from this group closed year-to-date. A couple of project highlights from this year. They were the, they were the core folks tied into the Valley Health, Hanley, Cleny build-out. So you've heard from that and adds to reports. You know, our team did all the technical build-out in that project. We installed the, all the technology equipment, the Teladoc's that the virtual physician comes in on. We actually built, we built out a full permanent network connection to Valley Health. And Valley Health has a permanent network presence in that room up there that's just no different than the network office that they have at any of their other buildings. Direct connection back to that all the time. And then some other projects up there in there. They've, they've been actively working on some self-service password online services and continuing to work on multi-factor. So this group, they have a couple of pretty large projects that's going to be happening. And I want, I'm going to park on a few of these here just for a little bit. A core firewall project, that's primary cybersecurity piece of equipment that everybody has. It's a very powerful piece of equipment for us. It's going to be upgraded this year, this summer. We've started that work already. Switches and new access points are going to be replaced. Probably not this summer at Daniel Morgan, but later in this school year, about 110 access points at Daniel Morgan and then a hundred dozens, which is an ideal scope network. We are going to be putting in new cafe assistant servers this summer. That's going to happen in the next several weeks. We're going to start that project. And then you're, you're aware of the lot area network project we have with Chantel for meetings here, so that work started literally days after we did the approval here. And we've been working on it actively since. We've already, we've already had to cut over three or four of our sites, and we plan to cut over Hanley later this week and possibly at Virginia at mid-quarter of the week. So our, our goal is to have that left before mid-June, ready to move all of them certain. So two big projects that I'll spend a little more time just to comment on. So we've been about probably close to a year now working on planning and prepping for an phone system project. It's, it's really technically intensive. It's a complete redesign. We're moving to a cloud-based calling system that, and down the road, it's going to offer some extra features and functionality that we'll eventually get to. It's going to provide some call, call savings. From an end-user perspective, they're not really going to notice much difference. You know, they're going to still pick up, we've been modifying and upgrading phones over the last several years that have phones that are capable for this new system. So the goal is that a teacher or a staff member really doesn't even know that this is happening behind the scenes. But we'll be taking away servers that are in rooms now and routers and stuff will all be cloud-based on the Cisco Webex platform and the Amazon cloud. And they won't know any different. Eventually, we'll, we'll deploy some features like police mode email for staff and then potentially like cell phones and some cell phone on a cell phone app. So you know, an example that if it ever would become a reason again, like we had a few years ago, where staff were required to work from home. Teachers could potentially within their Chromebook and they can call from their Chromebook and still use the school caller ID or make calls from a cell phone to school caller ID and some other functionality. But just know that's a project that's behind the scenes, very, very resource and tight. But our goal was to have that left before the start of the new year. And then one last project I'll, I'll highlight here is our cybersecurity federal E-rate pilot program. So this was an application I wrote in late winter of '24, and we were, we were announced that we were awarded in January. So a little over 171,000 over three years. This is a federal pilot program that's tied to the E-rate program. So E-rate is the FCC program that we, that schools rely on, have relied on for decades and help pay for like internet service and some core equipment. This is a pilot program being piloted across the country. We're one of 700 school districts in the country that's part of the program. It's on the handful in Virginia. And our next steps now are to start building out RFPs. We, we hope to have those ready within the next month or so. And then to be ordering equipment sometime around the September-ish timeframe. And it's going to allow us to add some, some additional more advanced cybersecurity hardware and software to the environment. Some staff, some stuff that's going to focus on like staff vulnerability training and then some actual equipment that's going to be able to do some log monitoring and some, some like automated response and stuff on our network. Kind of pretty technical stuff, but again, just know that that's happening. And that's, that's 171,000 over a three-year period. And then after that, we'll see what happens. But right now, we're told that the money is, this federal money is still going to be available. We haven't heard any difference. So that's what we're playing for. That's plenty for me. Any questions? Do you have any of that? Be happy to hear any. I know some of that's kind of technical.
Sure. You mentioned a rollout. If you go to the previous slide, by the end of the year, did you mean the end? I mean, excuse me, the beginning, did you mean the beginning of the new school year or the beginning of 2026, the calendar year? Or which one is that? I, I don't know because it's not really in there. But you sort of mentioned that there was like a rollout of some type of program.
Yeah, yeah. So the phone system, we, we're actively working on that now. The goal is to have that cut over before the school year starts.
Okay. So are there any projects that you've been talking about where implementation is like further down the road than say the beginning of the school year?
Yeah, the majority of what I focused on here is primarily stuff that just completed or that we hope to complete in the summertime, like we're very good summer project. I think there are a few things that will, that will fall over, like the cyber stuff will fall over. Like we'll be working on that later in the calendar year. Our hope is to start to make those purchases before the end of the calendar year.
Okay.
The majority of the other, everything else we've mentioned will complete between now and August.
Okay, great. Thanks. How often do we get these, these updates? Are these annually or do we get one in the spring or in the fall?
I can do them however often you'd like typically. I do them around this time of the year because it's kind of a good way to wrap up what we've completed during the school year. And by now, we typically know what we're doing in the summer. And so it's kind of a good time for a preview.
Sure, yeah. This is, there's a lot going on. I appreciate it, Valerie.
We have a pretty project happening, so there's a lot of work going on.
I saw the website, it looked great, sir, on there.
Oh, yes, I did remember that, didn't I?
She did. She even had a graphic.
On that. Yeah, let's, yeah, let's give a shout out to them. So Maggie, Maggie and some folks in our team have been working very heavy on that. We are probably three-quarters of the way through the design process, and we look to possibly start migrating content in the next three weeks or so. So this is moving to a completely different platform. It's a requirement because of a buyout from a vendor that we use. So we're not looking at a drastic overhaul, but more of a modernized, refreshed version of what we have. But it is on a completely new system, and it, it'll be obvious. It'll be, that's going to be now. That also is another one that we hope to have a lot before the school year starts. Fingers crossed.
So you mentioned the internship program. What does that look like, the selection process? You know, how, do you have a lot of kids trying to sign up for that?
Yeah, so we have, yeah, it's a big question. We have a pretty well-oiled process for that, I think. So what we do is generally around February, we start communications with Katie Logart and Sarah Weinstein at the IC. And then we typically are also working with one or two of the technical teachers to get feedback. And they, they have a pocket of kids that they generally recommend. So they're on our radar. And then we open up an interview process to anyone who wants to, who wants to interview for it. And it's advertised through that class and through Sarah specifically. And then we hold formal interviews. So we have two or three members of my staff that have worked with Sarah and the schedule, and then we go to the IC and we hold interviews. And then we do a second round of interviews, and we just finished those up about two weeks ago. And then we make a formal job offer, and it's typically full-time, 40 hours a week in the summer. And we average around about 10 hours a week throughout the school year. We have to meet a certain requirement of virus for the class so that that way they get credit for it. But it's, it's been a really great program for us. They, you know, we've had, had some really good students. We've had students that potentially would love to be able to hire if the opportunity ever presented itself. They're valuable assets to the team.
Great, it's really good to hear.
Yeah, I'll just say, you know, this is the one department where no news is good news. And I've said that a lot of times, I'm saying for your shift and, you know, it works, right? Technology works. And when it works, you don't have to think about it, like water for fish. The other thing, and customer service has always been a real pride for the tech department. We've all worked in organizations where tech people make you feel stupid, like Doug, did you plug it in or did you restart it? And his guys and women in that department are just, you know, they're, they're certain. They have a great attitude. So even when folks, you know, don't have the technical acumen, they, they maintain good culture and climate. So even when folks, you know, the mind of technical acumen, they, they maintain good culture and climate within our school division. So it's a real point of pride. I'm really pleased to see the progress too with the strategic plan. We're getting more intentional, both events department and air's department on life cycle. Being able to project out multiple years for a replacement. So that we're never at a point of fail where the, the equipment is so old. Like if it failed tomorrow, we'll be in a world of hurt. We're always ready to replace at the right time. So that's been great.
All right. I believe the Buckley Show begins now. Sure.
Hey, everybody. I'm here with strategic plan update number two. You will remember last month we came with, we shared with you that we have partnered with advanced learning partnerships to collaborate on our strategic plan. The purpose of tonight's presentation is to educate you on what key performance indicators are. But first I just want to share the timeline and a few other things with you before we get into that. You'll see the timeline on slide two. Just talking about how the purpose of this slide was to show you how we have intentionally planned over five months for the culmination of this strategic plan, starting with phase one in February, phase two in March. And then in April and May, in June, you'll see ongoing work with teams throughout those first two planning sessions. And then finally here in June, our leadership retreat will be phase three. And we will pull in school based teams to work with us as well. And then the final school board update, we are hopeful for June 25th as we don't have a meeting in July. So we want to make sure you all have everything you need by the end of June so that we can implement at the start of next year. The homework that you all did at the last session, I synthesized and put on this, this slide just as takeaways and considerations. So just be thinking about the things on this slide as we matriculate through this presentation and next month. Because I think you will see evidence of everything you put on these slides as we go through even the key performance indicators. Just real quick, what is, what is the difference? I think it's easy to get lost in what a goal, an objective, a KPI and a strategy is. So I just wanted to define it for you on this slide, starting with the goals, which we talked about goals and objectives last month in our session. So I know we did a little work and you understand that a goal is a broad, long-term outcome. And as you go down to the objective and the KPI and the strategy, it gets more specific. So that objective is a specific measurable step. The KPI is a metric, which we're going to talk about on the next several slides. And then the strategy of those actions taken to ensure that all of the above gets finished. Okay? And I gave you examples of all of these on the right side. So you'll see it gets broad and then we get much more specific as we get to the bottom.
That example column is really key. Like that solidifies it for me.
Any questions about that?
Let me show you, read through that, that's good.
I think even, you know, even school based teams kind of get distracted by the terminology. So I thought this slide was really important just, and, and we can park here and we have this to reference as we go through the plan. Okay, key performance indicators, which is the purpose of this presentation, where you're going to hear us call them KPIs. They're measurable values that track progress towards specific goals. And particularly in public education, they monitor how effectively schools are achieving those strategic priorities. You'll see over here this image on the right, how it's just ongoing from the strategic goal and that data monitoring, monitoring and then the action planning. So how are KPIs measured? You know, quantitatively, specifically, they're time bound and they're benchmarked. So you'll see the definitions of all those on the right side. They're based on data, not opinions. They're tied directly to that strategic goal. They're measured within a clear timeframe and they're compared against set targets of performances. And we're going to show you specific examples of those on the next several slides. So here are examples. Now remember, these are in draft mode. I thought about separating it under goals for you, but those are still in draft mode. So I just wanted to be very specific tonight. These, these are under our learner empowerment goals and our staff empowerment goals. So some examples under learner is that we said, you'll see the time bound. So by this date, 100% of our schools will be accredited. And that will be measured by the state performance framework. Okay? By 2030, 80% of students with disabilities will spend 80% of that, of their day in general education settings. Again, it's quantitative, it's specific, it's time bound and it's benchmarked.
And I might use that one as an example because you're going to have some homework tonight as well. We, there's a phrase, what, what you measure gets done, right? So this is a good example. The tendency sometimes in educational settings is that your students with disabilities are not in the most, the least restrictive environment. They're pulled out, they're, they're educated over here down this hallway, right? Whereas the goal is, we want our students with disabilities as much as possible educated with their age appropriate peers. So here we have a goal, and this is kind of a gold standard for special education, is that 80% of our students with a disability spend 80% of their time in the general education setting. And, and it's a great example. If we don't measure that, report out on it, superintendent board look at it every year, then all the way down the ladder, it doesn't, it's not important, right? So this drives that work all the way through the multiple layers of this organization down to the IEP level. When we write these IEPs for students, that's in the back of everyone's mind. So that's a great example of what gets measured and gets done.
And I tried to pull on these KPIs, I tried to pull from several different objectives. So you're going to see some that just fall under different objectives under the learner empowerment. But there's one on dual language, there's one on proportionality index for gifted education will be 0.75 or better. So those are just some good examples. Again, still in draft mode, but very well written, just in terms of the metrics. Under staff focused, by 2030, turnover rate of cafeteria workers will be at or below 10%. And then we've got some here with panorama. You all know we measure that using that annual survey. So specific percentiles and again, time bound. And truly, a lot of these say 2030. When we really, when we really start to edit some of these KPIs, we'll adjust that. It won't all be 2030, but because we're still in draft mode, some of this will be prior to then. So moving on to family and community focused in our organization and empowerment sections of our goal, of our plan. Some other examples here, I like to pick out some. Okay, so survey, following parent conferences, academic meetings or similar events here at the bottom. 75% of parents will have a positive reaction. Over here under organization, WPS transportation by 2027, on time arrivals will increase by 10%. So those are the metrics by which those KPIs will drive our strategies. So when we get down into the strategies, which are the rest of this month and some of June, and into our leadership retreat, we'll identify those specific strategies that will help us achieve these KPIs and the objectives and the goal ultimately. And this last slide is just why KPIs matter. Jason already mentioned, under the promote continuous improvement, we know what measured, what, what is measured gets done. But ultimately they provide focus for our team, they enable transparency for all of our stakeholders. They guide our resource allocation when we come to you all and ask for purchasing or we ask, or we give presentations. You'll see how we've allocated those resources and ultimately promotes continuous improvement over the five years of our strategic plan. And will drive all of our progress.
And that leads kind of to your homework that we'll follow up later. But this is your, this is your plan, right? So we're, we're doing a lot of heavy lifting as we should. But as you have priorities that are in your wheelhouse, you have measurements, you're like, five years from now, I want to make sure we've done that. You need to let us know so we can consider that. If we disagree, we can say, yeah, I'm not sure it's broken. But nine times out of 10, we're like, that's a great one. Let's put that in the plan. And that way you can really feel like you own this plan as well. So be thinking about the areas that you're passionate about or care most about. Because again, what gets measured gets done. If we want to have change, we want to affect change over the long haul, then we've got to measure it and then report out on it and have real strategies that are affecting that particular data.
Just going back to a consideration.
Yeah, I was just going to say that thing too. They kind of have it in what Jason said, maybe looking at it from a different angle. But like, there seems to be, we tend to measure, measure what is measurable. So there's probably certain things that we need to think of. I don't know what this homework looks like, but that, like Jason said, you know, for the things that we'd like to see, maybe they're not a metric right now. But I think this is where we figure out what that metric looks like. Like I could say, you know, that desk is 10 feet long or whatever, but how long is that desk going to last? Is that measurable? We don't know. Like, I mean, that's a helpful example, but.
Yeah, don't let the, if we need to develop the data tracking mechanism to, to accomplish the KPI, that's worthy work as well. Stuart, I was thinking of our conversation about mentoring. Like that falls into goal three. If we want to really blow the doors off mentoring in this school division, then we need to measure that. Both how many and the experience of students and families and that could be done through surveys, et cetera. That would require some work, right? We'd have to create surveys, we'd have to monitor, et cetera. But is that a worthy thing to do? And I think it is. And so that's an example of how, you know, the feedback we need to make sure you're representing your priorities as well.
You already know what one of my, we've been talking about the rationale for years, did some sort of longitude survey. But we see what happens. I know we did the one like a snapshot in time. Listening to have a job, listening to college, listening to the military. But five years from now, what does the Haley graduate, Haley graduate? I know that's hard to do and it's pretty keep track of people, but.
But we can, if we put our mind to it, we can do that. We're not going to get 100% participation, but even if we got 25%, that's, that's, that's something.
But just also think too, under what goal does that, has to be aligned with the goal, with the objective and the KPI and all the things. So we just need to consider. Any other question?
And so this input that you're looking for, this is going to be through June or?
We won't bring the draft to you until the end of June. So you have until then to provide feedback.
And when you say that they should align like the goals, do we, I guess this makes it part of the homework. Is there going to be like a, a reference point for us to say, okay, like here's the goals.
We'll send it to you all in draft. The goals and the objectives are what you saw last month. If you remember the homework you did last month, that will add, even though it's all still in draft, we'll add the KPIs if we can do that as well. As soon as we have those finalized, but we're still in process of maybe a week or two.
Great. Moving to the next topic.
For review. Any feedback on policies to review? Stuart?
I would like to look at policy K C, community involvement. You know, have we ever formed the, such committees as are being referenced in this policy? The board may appoint a committee of not less than three, appointing seven members for each public school, school division. Committee's duty to advise members of the school board with reference to manage the team, et cetera, et cetera.
Keyword just being may?
Yeah. I'm assessing half of it.
Not to my knowledge.
Seems like something that would have real value. The division doesn't really support creating those committees. Maybe Jana, wait there.
We will, we will review that, Stuart.
Next. Policy K?
KK or which one? We have lots of K's this week, Stuart.
School community, school community relations. Or maybe that's in the, that's under minor policy.
That might be a future action. Yeah, so I'll hold on on that.
Okay. Was it school, was it community involvement in decision making? We just talked about that one. Okay.
Well, he's looking at it, but he might want to clean up KGB just to tie it up for that one.
Oh.
Oh, I, I'm still confused. I know that I've got a quote here that starts with consequences for staff, students, shall be subject, et cetera, et cetera, shall be subject to this. What would that be under? Oh, it's, it is KGB.
KGB, okay. Public conduct, that's a far, okay. Now what was your concern on that one?
Four or five, and I know that I've been cautioned not to make comments about punctuation. But grammar and wording are okay. So I, I take that to heart. But that paragraph states, consequences for staff, students and visitors found to be a violation of the policy shall be subject to appropriate disciplinary action. The consequences are not going to be subject to appropriate disciplinary action.
This is true.
If you eliminate consequences for, then it will read appropriately. It says staff, students and visitors not to be invited.
You make a great point.
Thank you.
Anything else under review?
Consequences shall not, that's right.
That makes.
I, I had to read, I am, I'm slow. I'm picking up mine. Okay, the consequences are not the subject. Staff, students and visitors.
Anything else on me?
Give me an S and L time.
All right. Now we'll move to future action, which is nothing we need to do tonight. And we'll see you together in a couple of weeks.
So we have, sure, we have one, two, three, four, five minor policy provisions tonight. They're all very minimal. I will open each policy briefly, just tell you what the changes are. And if there's no comments, we'll just keep going through them. So first, policy DI, financial reporting and accounting. The only change here was a cross reference. Any questions on this one? And then we have policy D and disposal of surplus items and equipment. This policy was updated to reflect just one change rather than there of the items with added. Any questions on this one? Okay. And then we have EF, food service management. Policy and cross references were updated. So minimal wording, language at the top. And then we have a cross reference at the bottom. Any questions on this one? All right, we have EFD, food sanitation program. And we have policy and legal references updated in this one. Minimal language at the top and then the cross reference here. Any questions on this one? And then we have FB, facility planning. And on this one, we have policy, legal and cross references were updated. Minimal in the last paragraph and then we have a mission down here. Any questions on this one? And then finally we have fundraising and solicitation. If you remember, we brought this last month. And there was concern about, this policy was revised to match the V S B A as well as Dural's recommendation to adjust the K five to K four. So you have seen this policy before. So we're just bringing it back to let you know that those edits have been made. Any questions on this one?
All right. Okay, this is a major policy revision.
So I believe it was in March, I brought the textbook policy to you all for, as a review. And Dr. Pierce Gonzalez asked that we review it internally because there were concerns about the length of the process and how there hadn't been knowledge of that process being followed in years. Although I will say it has, it's not common practice to only have one primary resource in a classroom and that be a textbook. But regardless, we wanted to take a look at it, review our own internal processes and determine how to adjust this policy to both meet state requirements and local procedures. And I've brought back the revised policy for you all tonight. So you have, you remember the old policy was super long. And so the new policy is in green. So all textbooks that are used as the main resource must be adopted by the school board in accordance with regulations established by the Virginia Board of Education. All supplemental shall have the approval of the superintendent or designated prior to use in the classroom. In the middle paragraph, it talks about that there may be appointments for guardians or students to, on screening committees to assist in recommendations. But that is a may and not a shall. So that is an optional requirement. And then in the last paragraph, it defines. And then in the last paragraph, it defines supplemental, what versus may. Okay, so supplemental be additional, and then of course, may means it's primary or core element. I did give you all a supplemental, a supplemental document that links to the Virginia Board of Education. If you had time to look over that, it very clearly delineates what the local procedure is for adoption of a school board, or sorry, for adoption of a textbook. To summarize, in appendix A, that last section, we have to just very closely follow what it looks like at the Virginia Board of Education, meaning that we just have a committee, we review, and then we make a recommendation to you all. Also, it's important to know that the Virginia Board of Education very rigorously adopts texts every year. We can choose to choose a textbook that they've already put through a rigorous process. We would still bring that to you all and present it to you. We actually have a math textbook right now under review for grade six through 12. It would be the primary resource in the classroom, so I will bring that back in June. Both textbooks have already been through the process through the Virginia Board of Education and have been approved. So this is not us choosing a textbook that has not been through that process. Both choices are very optimal, and so it's, it's going to be a difficult choice for the committee internally, but we will bring that back to you all in June as this, if you choose to adopt this policy and present that to you all for approval. If we choose a textbook that has already been adopted by the state board of education, then it's, all the procurement act requirements are not subject. So only if we were to choose a textbook that was not previously adopted does that apply.
I'm really glad, this is a great example of why we review policies, their policies may almost spread, you know, self-concluded. This old policy is, is our, quite frankly, our page. Back in the day, you know, you would adopt reading text for kindergarten through 12th grade, be a million-plus-dollar decision. You would have vendors all over this place, this whole place would be set up with all kinds of free materials, be like a fair, it was quite a deal. And so that just doesn't happen anymore. And so the state has taken on much more a piece of that, vetting those resources for us, and quite frankly, most teachers are using a lot of supplemental materials to accomplish the end goal of teaching standards, which standards, of course, are not curriculum. And we write our own curriculum now with our curriculum writing, so it's just a different, different way. Like, when I started teaching, they handed me a textbook and that's how I am, and that's what I did. That's just not how it's done today, so.
I will say, most of the previous policy that we had were outlining the regulations that were established in that supplemental document that I gave you. In my professional opinion, it's best for us to just say those regulations because then when they're updated, et cetera, we just will always make sure that we adhere to those and it doesn't become a, we have to go back and revise the policy every time the regulations are changed. Any other questions?
That's good, all right. We'll move on to the. Sorry, run out of words. 2025, 2026, school board should represent this.
Okay, so as you all know, we have policy BBBB that allows for the placement of two handling students on the school board as non-voting representatives. They're not here tonight, but this isn't about this year, this is about next year. And we just received from the high school, two candidates, rising senior Skip Dixon and Julia Wanza, if I'm pronouncing that correctly. And so bringing to you all, there is a rigorous process, there is an application process at the high school, they have an internal review committee. Part of the application process is that they have to have teacher letters of recommendation, and then the internal team reviews those and selects the candidates, and then they recommend them to us for approval. So those two candidates are, it's our recommendation that they will be approved as non-voting members of the school board for the next school year. Actually, we need to change that date, right? 25 to 26? What do you do to update that date on the, this copy? We will do that. We are not voting on this tonight, right? That's on the side. Yep.
Any questions for now, then you can reach out to us possibly, or future action. And then I think it's. And Ms. Curry's show.
Ms. Curry couldn't make it.
Okay.
She heard her back this weekend, unfortunately. So tonight, I'm bringing you a major policy revision for EFV, and it's major only in the fact that we had to make some changes to it because of the results of our federal review. So EFV addresses our nutrition policies. The changes that we have were made by, were recommended by the state nutrition division at the Virginia DOE. They completed our five-year, we have, we do a federal review every five years under food service. They, and as part of that review, they review our policies. And so when they reviewed our policies, that they looked, they realized that we had not changed our policy whenever we came under the community eligibility provision program, the CEP program. And so they asked us to change our policy to reflect that we are under the community eligibility provision program, the CEP program. And we will be under the CEP program for another two years. And so we took their recommendations and we updated the policy with those, those changes. So, so in summary, this child, this policy simply changes three things really. One is, it updates to reflect that we are a member, or that we participate in the CEP program, and that we advertise that to our parents, and that all kids will get 100% free meals. We also updated the policy to reflect some required training for the fact that no meal charges, under the meal, under the CEP, there's no meal charges. And so we reflected that. And then we also updated it to reflect how we communicate to our parents about the community eligibility provision program, the CEP program. And that is through our electronic communications newsletters, our emails, our families, we do that each summer as we prepare for the new school year. We also had to eliminate anything that said that we accept applications, because whenever you're not under the CEP program, folks have to submit all their paperwork or how much money they make, and they still have an application, and we take that application, we run it through a process, and then we approve it and give work back to those individual families. We do not need that while we're under the CEP program. And so this policy will hold true for at least the next couple of years. There are a couple of things in here where they had us leave stuff in there about meal charges, even though you don't have meal charges, you could, if one school, you could be under the CEP program for four of your schools and the other two may not have it. So you could have some charging in those schools, and so we, so we updated that part as well. I think that's it. That's everything. Again, this policy has been reviewed by, by the federal audit folks at the DOE, and we have just taken their recommendations and pouring it over into our, our policies so that we meet the federal requirements. Do you have any entertaining question?
So what happens after the two years? Is it something where you would reapply?
Yes, we will reapply for that. Whether or not the federal government's going to keep that program in place is another question, but we, yeah, but we will, we will reapply in two years.
Is it because, it's just that it's a school-by-school determination, that the line was, it says, school officials determine school eligibility, it's one guidelines established with federal law, because if all students are eligible, you know, are, get free lunch, then there wouldn't have any school officials determining student eligibility.
That is correct. Whether or not we eliminate that, since we technically, I guess, we only determine student eligibility by the fact that they're enrolled in our school district. So we would have to make sure they're enrolled in our school district to get free food, so I guess you could say, that's a technical. Bring this back for approval next week. Thank you. Yep.
All right, and we're probably having an action item. The D S D A workforce readiness.
All right. Hello, everyone, this will be very short and sweet. All right, so, we still need the signature page. So each year, the Virginia School Boards Association invites districts to apply for the excellence and workforce readiness award. So you choose a programmer project that you do that hits with emphasis on these areas. So communication and collaboration with the business community, student engagement with the business community, or student entrepreneurial activities. So we focused our application this year on the spring showcase, which some of you attended last week. And if you didn't come last week, you'd probably come another year. This was the fourth year that we've done the spring showcase over at the Innovation Center. It's, it's an awesome event, there's always something different being highlighted each year. So we thought we had kind of a lower experience this year than past years, and we still had 200 people come over to the Innovation Center to see what we're doing. So we've worked on the application, it's here, hopefully some of you have had a chance to read it. And then all we're asking for tonight is we have to have signatures from our school board members in order to submit the application. So we're just asking for you to approve our application for 2025.
Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in train motion.
Motion to include the 2025 V S B A excellence and workforce readiness award application for which the vote will be activated. Second?
Okay, we've got a motion by Ms. Harris, and a second by Ms. Burrow. All in favor? Then you got.
Thank you.
All right, that concludes, oh, fortunately, we do have a need for closed session procedure.
Pursuant to section 2.2-3711A1 of the Code of Virginia, motion of the board of community closed session with the purpose of discussing personnel matters, including respective candidate employment, and assignment appointment, promotion of performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining or resignation of specific public officers, appointees or employees, specifically candidate instructional slash licensed position, substitute teacher and support staff roster, transfers, resignation and retirements.
Motion's done. We are now in closed session. Got it, sorry. Always get that one. All in favor? They really listened to me, like, just ripped off this, read it like a.